Here, Commissioner Livermore. Commissioner Middleton here.
Here.
Commissioner Seabird.
Here.
But please, then.
Welcome to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our three public comment going once, twice, three times over here. So. Um, agenda. We got anything on the agenda? No, sir. Good to meet. Possessions.
Consensus.
Consensus. And number six, we'll close, close session per MCL fifteen point. Oops, it's a E.
I mean, do we go into a closed session to meet with our attorneys? And bring the guests that are present with us?
Second.
Second.
Third.
Third.
Fourth. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We've got a lawyer that charged us. I'm gonna put that in right now, then. I would move that we add an item to our agenda with the note of attorney instructions. And what was leaked to the, we already approved the agenda, but after experimenting with our attorney, I think we need to write some instruction for him.
Oh, second that. I do have a roll call on that one.
Commissioner Caparrosa.
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore.
Yes.
And Commissioner Middleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo.
What if I said no?
You'd be out.
Yeah, I'll see.
Uh, Commissioner Seabird.
Yes.
Yeah, so that will be at six point five.
We're on attorney instructions. Yep. I'd make a motion that we authorize our attorney to act as directed.
I'll support that. A roll call.
Commissioner Caparrosa.
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore.
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Seabird.
Yes. We have to be. Okay, license plate scanner. Number seven. Any questions on that? Have any motions on that?
Yeah, I mean. I got some information. And uh, I was just in the same boat that we were in up there. Well, we can't talk about it, but. Anyway. The city of Norfolk, Virginia is getting sued right now. For um, under the fourth amendment. I think you got a hundred and seventy two uh, security cameras. And they're going to the court on the fourth amendment, right? Person, person to be secure in their persons. And sixty-three percent of the people there want that, them taken out, and thirty-seven don't.
Upon the, along with the other information I left there.
And I ask for the Norfolk people, um, I'm not familiar where it's at.
Virginia.
Okay, so is that an area in which they have a lot of people coming through, things happening, that the people would be like, there's no reason for this to be here? Or?
Over the huge naval facility.
Okay, so I shouldn't.
It is.
Okay, so it's an area that, all right, that's what I just wanted to make sure. It wasn't like just Chatham, you know, didn't want it because it's just a little tiny town. This is. Okay.
But one of my, one of my problems is, we don't, I don't know how long they're gonna keep the information or the data, where it goes. And how long is kept? I can easily see um, you know, some of your uh, insurance companies uh, charge insurance on the amount of miles you put on in a, in a month. Like if you drive under fifty miles a week, their uh, your rates go cheaper. But if you get, they got that out there, they can check how many miles you go, um, um, if it's, if there's too many. I understand the other side of a few things, but they, like I said before, uh, with a million views of the, of the scanner, forty-one, I think of a million are actually useful. And there's, I think, ten percent are read wrong. And I don't think our area really needs that.
If I might, I think I may have some information for you. I had a conversation with Captain Walter, if you don't mind, I'll see if I can. I asked him some of those specific, very specific questions, and uh, the way this one works is it works off of a list provided by Lean, which is the state's law enforcement information network, right? Which is also tied in with the national network. So a license plate has to be entered into one of those systems. As wanted for this, wanted for questioning in this, it goes on what they call a hot list. Camera, the, the hot list is updated four times a day. The camera gets that up, the, the setup, the machine gets that set up. If it, if a plate goes by, sees the plate, it scans it, and says, hey, wait a minute, that's on the, that's on my list. The sheriff's department will then get a notification that that list, that that plate was spotted this date, this time, this location. The day, like the data, like the pictures, it's not uploading pictures or sending pictures anywhere. It's only comparing the picture it took to the list. If it's not on the list, it doesn't care. If it's on the list, it's gonna send a notification.
So you, what are you saying, specifically looking for that?
For those that, I mean, I don't know how many plates are on that list. I imagine that at times it could be a lot, but it's only looking for specific license plates. It's not just logging.
It's not logging, if I go by, it's not logging it in.
It's gonna take a picture, but it's not gonna keep that picture, it's not gonna send that picture to. I don't know why you got a microphone picture on your computer.
Every once in a while, my computer microphone comes on.
So that's my understanding is how this is designed to work. You know, I believe it's the same system they use at the Mackinac Bridge. I believe it's the exact same system as. So in that case, if they're trying to track a suspected drug trafficker, they know that on today's date at ten fifty-nine AM, that he went through lane three. And then if St. Ignis has got a camera, picks him up there, and then, so eventually, if there's enough of these, especially if there's enough of these out there, they can get. Okay, look, we know this, every, every other Tuesday, this guy comes from wherever he's coming from. Goes through this same route, comes here, and then he goes back. So, okay, so next, a week from Tuesday, we're gonna be waiting for him here at the end. Or in Alger County, because they like us, and we're gonna put a stop to this guy hauling drugs through here. That's, that's my basic understanding. Some of your other questions, I don't have answers for, but that's my understanding, how it was explained to me, so.
It really is only three ways, three times we'll use this. Narcotic enforcement, Amber Alert, the missing child, we get an abduction, um, in our, our um, internal investigations we do with our pedophile stings.
And I would hope we would add Silver Alert to that as well, buddy.
Stolen vehicles, yeah, stolen vehicles, yeah. But the main concerns for us, it was narcotics, Amber Alert, and our um, stings to arrest pedophiles.
Silver.
That's.
Thank you.
Thing is, is where does this get stored, the information? Can somebody else access this? Is it, when I go across there, I'm a hundred percent legal, I got my tags on, I'm not under a thing. Your plate being, won't even be a plate of interest.
Right, that's what I said.
These are just plates that they put into the system that are hauling drugs, or somebody stole a vehicle, that's, that's a question. It's not Mickey Rondo, because he's gonna put on fifty miles over, you know.
That, that will never be recorded, because it's not there.
Right, it's not on the list, it doesn't care.
Who specifically are saying that just certain license plates will be read?
All license plates will be read.
Right, recognized by the person of interest as putting the plate in there for an abduction, for a traffic runner, for, for those types of things. It's, it, your plate will be read, but that's not a plate of interest, so it just, I mean, I don't, I don't know what happens doing, Mick. But it's, it's, it's not being looked at by what we're looking for.
Right, it's not gonna go in, it's not getting uploaded to some database.
I'd certainly like to know where it's going. Because if they read one number wrong, and that's the pedophile, you're gonna stop me.
Is it gonna be the same as if you had an officer in a vehicle reporting traffic going by? If you were to record traffic on the camera, where is that stored? Or is it only if you press the button and it records?
It's gonna be less, because it's, it's only gonna take pictures of them.
So we can't read it. We can't go back, like say.
I see everybody that drove by.
Three days ago, say, hey, we had a robbery three days ago over here. Can we go back into that and check and see?
If that plate came through.
If anybody, a specific plate, yeah.
Might be.
Because if we can, that means it has stored all plates.
Stored somewhere.
That's my understanding for what we're, what we're, what we've gotten it for, it's not set up for that. That we are setting it up to run off the hot list.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm gonna try and get Captain Walter and saw down.
You can get your questions answered.
And that's, and that's, you know, could it be reconfigured? I don't know that. But uh, my conversation with him was that, the way we have it, the way that we're gonna have it configured is only for those things with the sheriff.
Right. Yeah, could you grab one, we're in a board meeting, and we have a few questions for him, just keep timing out, honey.
Oh, probably, mine did that, we have a meeting a couple times.
See, it's so easy than yours.
Yeah, have him call us right back, we're in the board meeting waiting for him, so.
Well, we want, I mean, we want to come back.
We come back, yeah.
We come back, just have him call when he's ready, okay? And I'll have the announcement.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
The main question that we wanna ask, though, is where is it, is all license plates stored somewhere that can be accessed later? That's what we need to know.
Yeah, okay, there's okay with everybody, we'll come back to that, and we'll go to number eight at this time.
Find the meeting one is available.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So number eight. Um, letter to Drew Esso meeting. Any questions on that? I have no attention, they have been doing pretty good over.
Oh, I think we should still send it to him, this is.
Right, well, so is, because, well, if they were quit again, it's like, where is it at?
Right, oh, I see, I just, yeah. I left the signature line blank, there was no, who we wanted to have sign it, so.
You're.
I, yeah, as a member of the committee, yeah, that's, I wasn't sure that. I didn't wanna overstep, I didn't figure that since, since you were the one that called on it, it's like, eh, you know, maybe we should.
Yeah, that's what I was like, okay, I'm done with this, I'm gonna hand it over to you.
Yeah.
So we got consensus.
Too rude, would like to say.
Yeah.
He's feeling it, dear.
Consensus, consensus?
Yes.
And number nine, National Park Service waiver request. For thirty-one hundred dollars. That's kind of a.
Thirty-one, thirty-eight.
Okay, thirty-eight, yeah, very close. For the GIS.
And did they have anything that valued us when it's done?
He has some uh, national resource, what health grant called. They're probably different, right?
It is a nonprofit federal thing, um.
We've got a pretty good partnership with them going on many levels.
It has been getting better.
It has.
But them and their departments will rough for a while.
Well, we charge everybody else.
When's the last time somebody else requested this, the law, David?
Is that anything to, to do with their neighbors? You know, if I'm a neighbor, or I got property with them, neighboring them? Would, would this bother me? You know what I'm saying?
There's nothing in that file that they wouldn't be able to get. If they, if they wanna take the time and do it by hand, and click on each parcel, and write down the, the data, they could get everything off of the GIS that's offered. That, because the public would give them in that shape file.
Instead of them going on their computer, looking up, putting on their other computer manually, they can scroll to interview. Well, how do we end up with a thirty-eight hundred dollar?
Because that's what we charge to get that file. To a, to a business that, for whatever it was.
For profit business.
For profit business.
I, I don't know, you know, who will, I'd have to go back and look at it, the requests that have been made, what companies they were, but I still don't know what they would be doing with it. I think if we do do this, definitely put it in there that, you know, um, something about we're happy to work, you know, partner with the park service, and glad that we're working together on things, and so in future, try to get it back to where, you know, if we ever need something from them, hey. Boy, maybe also in that letter, say, any, any, like he agreed to it.
He did, yeah.
Will notify you of corrections, updates, and then any parcel data that they could supply us to, maybe get out an entire layer of, you know, they, they have.
They're willing to share information back to us.
I know Escanaba right now, they're going, or Delta County, they're going through their GIS, so you put a lot of money into it to actually make it right.
Yeah.
So all theirs will be made right. After they go through it, I believe.
Is that the, you guys phone going on?
Oh, yeah. I didn't hear ya. You're on speakerphone.
Okay.
Uh, can I, listen, Dean. Um, but, question for you. Um, with the cameras, if we had, say, yes, yes, okay. Say we had a robbery three days ago, and we're looking for, see who came from that area, can we go back and find that?
I, I am not sure.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent, I'm, I'm not sure. That would be a question I would have to ask our rep.
Okay.
So we don't, I'll.
Think you could ask by next week?
I can ask tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll call the guy tomorrow.
Make sure you get all the questions to him, though, so we get them answered. That covers the biggest one.
I know, and you just don't store anything in a database unless we put it on the hot list.
Okay, because that was a question, if it could do that, then it is holding it somewhere. Right?
Correct. You're, you're a hundred percent correct here, but, you know, I, I don't wanna say it's irrelevant, um, the courts have determined that we can certainly use these things. Um, and they're just to, it's, it's a tool for law enforcement, you know what it is. Now, whether it can go back or not, I, I don't know. I, I guess that's the question I wasn't asked. I did not ask that question, but I certainly will ask it tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Hey. I'd like to take that, um, if we can take that and put it on a, on a separate line item for naturally, not on a consensus?
Yeah, we're gonna put it as.
And I'll back to National Park Service. That was number seven, license plate scanner. Put it on next week for unfinished. Now back to waiver for the park service. Any other discussion on it? Anybody have a motion?
Do we need a motion, or we just need a, I mean, I, I think we should.
Or a consensus.
Yeah, my consent, my, my thought would be that, you know, the partnership isn't.
They're used, they would like our information to better their information, and we all will benefit for it, so I do see that it would be all right to waive that fee, considering that we were gonna get even better information there.
I know, you need to. Have you got consensus on that?
Consensus.
Consensus, yeah, number ten. Can't hear you over there, a bit to the left.
Didn't hear no, so.
He's still in shock about the line of law.
I, I have become catalyst.
It would have been a way better super ball.
Yeah, hell, yeah. Well, I know.
I did it to mine right away.
I'll tell you though, it's getting me to remember my.
You won't forget that pattern.
Yeah, because I gotta hold it every ten seconds. All right. UP nine oh one authority fees, thirty-eight thousand and change. This is all tax stuff.
Yep. All the stuff to keep it going.
You got anything on this?
We came early. Yeah, we're part of a UP, you know, fifteen county consortium, October, September, every year.
And this is.
Sorry, yeah, we do.
It isn't like way higher or lower, it's.
Consistent, consistent.
Nothing's coming out of left field at us.
Consensus?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yeah.
Isn't, if this thing is UP wide, eh?
Yeah, on a fifteen counties. Helps us all afford it.
Give you the authorized treasure to post nights in banks, call, and sit by, and exist.
Thought we already did. What's that?
Another one.
Oh, there's another one. Okay. That sounds like, I didn't go back and compare, compare the numbers.
I probably did that. Number twelve, we got. Being reappointed. To, Elton County Board, DHS, and Elton County Jury Board. We already did the. Oh, okay. Oh, really? On the jury board? So, will she fill it then, Denise?
She got it, she's only a woman, her son.
Yeah, she would need any more than after that, or is that?
Next year.
Okay. Consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Thirteen. I'll pass, fourteen.
Pretty much. I didn't think you guys would be on top of accepting it. Um, I have had some conversation since putting in my resignation, and um, with the help of you guys for a couple of months, so I can maintain my position on the board. Um, if any of you are willing to take any of my committees, and I could still continue just until I get some personal things figured out, I would like to continue.
You give me a list of those ones?
Yeah, we got them. We will figure it out.
Okay.
And I'll see, we haven't seen Henry again.
I'll get the rest of four.
I already, I think I looked, I can tell you, I can tell you, like the land bank in the brownfield.
Okay, so at this point, I make a recognition that we uh, not accept. Just a little recognition.
Or do I rescind that resignation?
How do we do that?
I rescind it?
Yeah, there you go. It's no longer an item.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
With the help.
Yes, I, I was serious about that.
We're recording that part.
So, for the committee list, you, we have it in time for next week to redo?
You can just give, give me the ones that you need.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can get in there.
And start making calls to.
He was already.
He was interested, he was second on your waste thing.
On waste anything, so.
So I know, and there's whatever else ones.
Saw land bank and uh, brownfield, I can take both of those, I'm sorry. Obviously not for rerating town.
We can update by Friday.
Yep, yep. We didn't want, we didn't want to accept that.
It was really, really hard to write that letter.
I know what happened, that's why, that's why I didn't pass you a ton of balls.
Number fourteen, house statement ideas and revenue sources. Nothing.
We're not gonna strain the commissioners, not bad.
Yeah.
It's gonna save us.
Yeah, um, number six, fifteen, unfinished business. Done, done. Sixteen, financial matters. Oh, here you go. A through I, is there any question on any of this?
Bills, they look good, so.
It's, and a lot of us to clean up last year's, end of the year stuff.
Right.
Do it every year.
The only thing we're doing for twenty twenty-five is the.
Better revenue. Better revenue.
No, we're just doing a, a, we should do twenty twenty-five, we're gonna do an amendment. Increasing the revenue, I closed out the ARPA fund, not bank account, and they're putting them in general fund. So we just are gonna amend the revenue and then amend on the expense side.
But that's not in this.
Did it?
Yeah.
F and G, oh, yeah. Oh, gotcha, yeah. Right, I bring them in, read them all, I promise, I just. Yes.
Yes.
You know, lots of hosts.
Any resolutions?
I don't.
No resolutions, I accept responsible. Committee reports, and they got any parts?
Uh, buildings and, well, facilities, whatever, well, work is coming along pretty darn quickly on the office for our veteran service offices.
It looks nice, yeah.
Can't wait to see that get done, and sure, we'll be. Oh, this is a camera, we'll be volunteering to help move everything when it comes time, so. Yeah, that's gonna be a, that's gonna be a nice thing for veterans coming in, that they can access that through the public hallway instead of.
I think we should have somebody from the paper coming in.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, we're gramming race.
Lightbulb for you?
I've been down better.
Yeah, there you go.
The uh, the signage that we're gonna approve in here, we should look at it, signage upstairs, too.
Oh.
All the office markings and stuff?
For the doors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For everybody. Yeah, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There it is.
There and there.
Oh, I don't, maybe we should go take a walk through and.
I did, and that's what, and I forgot to bring it up, when we brought up some of the, it might even be a good use for some of that. Actually, that extra money, could I like to see like the black bowl style, like above the doors, so you can reach both ends? And just look, you know, just tidy it up, make it look nicer. Sorry, just literally just, I was like, oh, that was another idea.
I do have a question for you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Is any more on the animal, uh, shelter, is it positive, or?
Everything right now is status quo, as far as I know.
But.
We should, we should be able to take over on the first.
But it's not.
Not hold my breath until.
That is not a judgment from the court, though.
Right, they, they go in lock at the last second.
And we're.
If they do, yeah, the judge isn't gonna be happy, but, you know, I, I think they intend to at the moment, I believe they intend to honor the agreement.
So it's gonna be March, March first, we take over.
Yeah. And even as far as social media.
They've said.
They've said it.
They have been evicted as of March first.
Yes, but I'm saying that even just recently, they made a post, you know, hey, we're taking, they like picked out a day and asking everybody to come help, because they still sound to be intending to get out by March first, so.
Right now, I am, I am quite hopeful that everything is gonna go as planned, as agreed, so.
Alls I had is a health department meeting, um, they are having their annual, um, if anybody's wanting to get a subject license, they're having their test here coming up soon.
Have your subject like redone, or?
No, I have your license, solid. Well, I got, anything on you, Mick?
Nope, I went to a fair board meeting, and there really wasn't much.
Um, the only meeting I made it to, because everything was uh, too bad, and right now they're just looking to fill one member-at-large seat for Alger County, and I believe Lisa Howard was their interest, um, she has, she has a smile on her face, but she hasn't given me an answer. Um, otherwise, just moving along there.
Correspondence? Or comments?
Or comments?
Um, incident question.
Okay.
What it's technical, I'll I'll talk to you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not the one on technical.
I can help with a minor problem, but that's about as far as.
Ready to take my computer to a ski range, but.
Where's your new one?
This is it.
No, this new one.
Oh. Maybe that's.
Well, maybe it's time to switch over.
Oh, yeah. And it might.
Uh. Just glad that we're able to work something out to keep Kelly with us.
Yep, yes, yeah.
It's a second year ago, so. Which is very valuable to the common and that, so.
We have a good rounded board. Might not all agree all the time, but we we disagree. There you go. I mean, that's.
What we did, we do it politely. So.
Man.
I agree with Mike. Kelly?
You would like to?
Yeah. I, it definitely wasn't a light decision, um, and I appreciate the ones that did reach out and just kind of. Let me know how hard it would be to replace me, um. Didn't know I made that much of an effect, but it. Feels good going into the next four years. I appreciate everything and I'm. I really like doing this, so I'm excited to see what else I can learn. So, thank you for keeping me.
Thank you.
So this is just temporary.
Yep, yep, when she's ready to take back over her stuff, we'll hand it back what she wants.
Stop comments.
So. Welcome back.
Who is that song?
Welcome back, Carter.
Carter.
Pam.
Nah, nothing.
Sure. Just our uh, we'll go uh, contract with Bert Township's going really well. Um, township supervisor reached out to me, asked me if I could come down to Marshall Evans meeting. We're gonna go down there and we're gonna get to give out three life savings awards. To three of your uh, Bert Township B M S employees. So uh. Should be a good meeting and just remind everybody that um, our Rescue Twenty One fundraiser is coming up. February twenty second, um, a lot of hard work's been put into that by Andrew Sheriff Blank and Mr. Seberg and a lot of people. And uh, love to see some fit commissioner faces to Legion that evening if you can make it. Stop by and say hi.
That was actually good.
I let Steve talk about it.
You look a thunder.
Yeah, it's still, sorry, go ahead, buddy.
So this is open to the public. It's February twenty second, Saturday, so not just Saturday following. Um, in 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 again, I reached back out to our sponsors, uh, they're so generous and I have people actually calling. They hate we we sponsor as well. So just with sponsorship fees, it's, I'm I'm up in that uh, fourteen thousand dollar range that people just threw money, you know, towards our tournament. So with that money, we buy some raffle prizes. We have an awesome amount of uh. Uh, raffle prizes, but what happened this year, a lot of these businesses donated. Items instead of uh, giving money and. I'm I'm talking ice fishing tents, but we have gifts that don't, it's not just related to ice fishing, it's. Uh, leaf blower combination stuff and uh, drills and you know, just.
Necklaces.
Yeah, necklaces. Couple jewelry stores, but uh, so this is open to the public, anybody, many don't have to fish, um. And it's a free dinner. I mean, you can donate if you want, uh, and I'm hoping last year we made the, after all, everything was paid, uh. Well, seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty bucks that we made last year. This year, I think we're gonna be up around that twenty thousand. I really do. Uh, just because of, and it's mostly local sponsors, you know, in Eldra County, uh, Marquette that reaches out a little bit, but. Looking forward to this, so. Um, February twenty second, if you want to fish, you can register on Friday from six P M to nine P M at the Legion. Otherwise, the day of the tournament, which is Saturday, you can register from six in the morning till nine A M. Yep, yep, the ice by three P M. And weigh in your fish. You can go in one man teams or two man teams. It's uh, twenty thirty, twenty dollars a person for registration. And it's the heaviest combination of five fish. So uh, there's whitefish, lake trout and salmon, those three fish. You can take your three biggest or your five biggest fish out of that combination, weigh them in. If you have the heaviest five fish, I think first place is five hundred bucks, second place is four, three, two, et cetera. So it's 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 a lot of fun. Uh, the Legion pulled a special license this year. Where uh, it's a one day liquor license where people are there and they want to get themselves a cocktail, they can go next door. The Legion will serve them, so you know, that works out for us as well. Hope to see is all there. Uh, so. Uh, that's the fishing tournament, uh, uh, Marquette County, we've taken, we have six of their.
Seven, seven.
Seven of their inmates, um, I think Sheriff either billed what uh.
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand. Now we have a couple more. Uh, that we're gonna be able to bill. So you know, should be billing next month. Get bring in an extra.
Bring in the chairs.
Yeah, I can tell you exactly. So great money coming in from Marquette County. It's gonna be close to eighteen thousand bucks. Uh, I think we had it figured out.
I know, I talked with one of, I've had some pretty regular communications with one of their board members and they're quite happy with.
Yeah. Yeah, and we have an agreement.
We've been able to help them out.
Sure.
Yeah, they they appreciate it. It's under ten thousand dollars a month. We'll bring in revenue right now.
I was talking to Sheriff about that, you know, he was saying, you know, that's gonna help out. You know, and coming to. Contract time and that, I suppose. Actually not, I. This is, this is gonna come to an end in a couple of years. So it's something to kind of a one time index money, it should be a one time outflux. Where I think we should take that money, this is my personal, I put it on that bond. Get rid of that jail bond. It's for the jail, it's come from jail, let's get rid of that bond so we can move forward on different stuff.
The only thing when when I brought up contracts, when that opener comes up for the deputies is they. We put a lot of extra work right now by adding these market county inmates, a lot, a lot. And ninety plus percent of these inmates have. Medical issues, they have mental health issues. And I just don't want the board to lose sight of. The deputies that are doing the work over there, so when they do come for a. Contract negotiations with the board, they're working really hard to bring revenue to the county too, and they're putting their own blood, sweat and tears into it, or they don't have to. I mean, they they have to cuz Steve and I proved them coming.
No, they everybody, they don't have to, but.
But but so it's just, as soon as I brought that, just for for that for future.
Yeah, I wanna touch on something too. We're like R twenty one, this. Fund or fundraiser. I think right now R twenty one is pretty strong land base. We can, doesn't matter, snow, mud, whatever, we're strong. We're weak on ice.
Yep.
And I sent. Mr. Blank, a picture of a boat. Yesterday. For ninety six thousand dollars. That would be, that was our. One that we, if we had to pick, that would be the one we.
Yeah, right now we have a hovercraft and you know, and it has bags on it. It's perfect in the perfect ice conditions where it's flat, no jagged ice. Lake Spirit's not like that. You got jagged ice all over out there. So you're constantly replacing bags, which isn't a huge cost. But this airboat that Dean had sent me, I was actually when they, that was a few years back, they came up in Green Bay and I actually went out in a couple of them and. And uh, the hulls on them are are for that jagged ice, they're uh, they maneuver easier, um.
They float.
It's right, and they float, and they hovercraft does too, but. Uh. And I still think the hovercraft, you know, we could actually trade that in and get a pretty decent price for it. You know, but it's not, you know, a hundred thousand dollar, uh.
No.
So, but that's probably the only piece of equipment that we're actually lacking. We still utilize the hovercraft. And uh, and we're all set as far as any emergencies, whether it's on water or land, other than ice. I, you know, I'd still, we we can make it work, but it'd be easier with a that boat.
The bad thing with the hovercraft is is me personally, I don't wanna go and train on it because. I go train on it. I'm working on two, three hour changing bags.
Yeah.
If that's all it is, that's if it didn't rip anything out, just just to take it off and train it.
It's a rare time that it goes out and it doesn't have to have a bag replaced.
Yeah.
And it was the same with the old one, I mean.
Yeah.
Every time we fired it up.
But it's just something I admire for the county and I don't know how. And. I always said, I'm not gonna sit here and try to push rescue cuz I'm. That's kinda, I guess, my, I like the rescue part of Eldra County, so, but that is one thing that we're lacking and knock on wood, there hadn't. Been any ice emergencies really. A while, but when there is one, it's now, and it seems like it happens, boom, boom, three in a row. But.
It's me after I.
So I'm wondering if we can utilize um, nine one one. I don't know, is there, is there a way, I mean, there's that. We have a lot of money in it. Our fund balance has a lot. You know, is there a way that the county could borrow against something and say nine one one puts in ten thousand a year on nine one one for how many years? Our, if we vote as a team to the money that we raise, if we put in five thousand a year. For the next five years, you know, or something like that, is there a way we can make this happen? I don't know.
Expense has to follow department.
I don't.
So that's why we're, what I was talking to him that there is a a pretty good site unbalanced in nine one one. And and that is rescue. Nine one one.
I don't.
So why that couldn't be utilized because that would be.
You could always turn around and still donate a percentage back to if you wanted to, but yeah, but you're not, not as a funding mechanism, but as a.
Cuz the place we buy this from would not take ours and trade it, that's the thing. So you'd have to sell it outright, so we'd have to buy that outright and then once it does sell, that money will go right back to the county.
Go back into the nine one one.
Which, and if we're gonna do something like that, I'd like to see us have both at the same time anyhow, or. To we're, to we're sure that. New piece of equipment is gonna actually do it.
And the problem is, we'd never be able to afford a new one. We looked into it with a two fifty.
Uh, and yeah, the one that we would want is like ninety.
Right, that was the one that, like I got, this one's a used one with a brand new motor.
Yeah.
And that's the thing is, it's like, oh, great, but. It's always that one, it's to buy used, you have to be approved and ready to buy. Like if I'm buying something my personal self. I find it used, I'm ready to buy, I buy it. A county can't do that. Just like that, they have to, everything has to go through board and everything else, and by the time it's approved. Somebody else bought it. A good deal doesn't last long.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we ever wanna. Is there a way to do that? And then if we ever run across a good deal like this one again. Be able to maybe go look at it anyway and see if it's.
With better needs and.
And you, like, it'd be you, Matt and Ted. You. Did both of them.
I did, yeah.
So you guys would have a better knowledge of which one, if this one would be it.
Yeah.
But it'd be nice to have it approved and ready to go to where if we find like that, we can just send you go look at it and if it's right, we can move on.
So I think you need to sit down with Pam first.
Yeah.
And stuff and see where the funding could possibly come from.
Eldra County's uh, you know, uh. Really says a lot about our emergency services just because of the people. I mean, if you think about that hovercraft. Back when we bought that, I mean, the. The public had a lot to do with that.
That was raised for Brian.
Absolutely.
To put a lot of time.
You know, and I know that if I went out and, you know, and and we talked about what we need for ice rescue. Uh, there'd be a lot of donations. I I I I know there would be and it also.
And I think I could sell that one to a neighboring county ours. That would be an awesome inland lake one that we have. They don't give shove ice, and I know somebody that might purchase it for a county for donation.
Yeah.
Well, does even Lake Michigan get as much as?
They get shove ice.
I didn't know if they got quite as much or not.
Inland lakes, this is an awesome inland lake, you know, hovercrafters, but it just.
And our and our townships are much more fortunate now with rescue equipment that we don't necessarily have a need for anymore. But it's still good equipment that we're donating to Rock River Bert Township, you know, those are the 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 two main ones, but uh. Yeah, I mean, Eldra County's sitting pretty good right now with the emergency service.
Yeah, I like what Steve said too, cuz if, if you get a chance to go there next Saturday, you will see the support. That American Legion building will be packed.
Yeah.
With our residents that support our emergency services and support the work that the sheriff's office is doing in emergency service, it'd be packed. It's.
Rescue twenty one wouldn't even be there if it wasn't for our volunteers. I I can't say enough about our volunteers. Years ago, we had a rescue team that was with just employees and we had a hell of a time calling people in. Everybody would leave work and that phone ring, it's like, eh. Nowadays, you know, with the paging system that we have and we have an alert that goes off. I can see who's responding and it's all of our volunteers, you know, in uh, that are that are coming in. And they're not making a lot of money. They're not making any money, none, you know, I give them a gift card, you know, and they're happy with that, so.
I give so much support to this because I'm one of those people he's talking about.
Yeah.
That you're trying to get people back in and we did everything.
Yeah.
We did all the extrication, everything.
Yeah.
And it was tough.
And the same thing with Bert Township.
No more than a double handful of people do everything.
If it wasn't for Bert Township Rescue, holy cow, I mean, we're responding in however way to get over there. You know, it's a life death situation, then you know, they're they're not gonna make it. You know, Bert Township's uh.
Twenty twenty five years ago, we were dreaming about this.
So.
Oh, look at that.
You know, I dare you, we were, we were certainly controlling over there. Oh, yeah, if we only we had this, this, we could do that.
Well, the money that we're saving on being people come in overtime all the time too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And I can tell you Rescue Twenty One is every company's envy right now around us.
Sure.
Every county wants to have what we have. In Rescue Twenty One, they do.
Well, they have other counties calling and asking.
They wanna be us. And that's a tribute to you guys. It's a tribute to the people that have worked their tails off to make this happen. That guy right here.
Well.
That guy right there. We're a lot of great people that hours and hours on this.
He's kinda in food, uh, the townships too.
Yeah.
After a rescue.
Well, yeah.
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 That that means a lot.